Always, always.
Okay, so moving on to minutes and reports.
I make a note of the minutes of March 9th and the reports of the Fire Department, Criminal, Treasure, and the area and vote off. I have the second.
Second.
Reitner?
Reitner?
Yes.
Reed?
Reed?
Grenade?
Grenade?
Reed?
Reed?
While we're waiting for Chris, Jody, you see Chris really pop up.
Time for the technical difficulties. Can everybody else put their audio on? Could you put your mic on? Thank you. Reed, we're waiting for your vote.
Okay. Alright, bye.
Hang on, Jolynn. I'm trying to get, fix his issue. Chris, you want to hang up and call in again and see if that fixes the issue?
Unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Now I can hear you. I have all participants unmuted. So all participants have to put themselves on mute. I'm pressing star six.
Yeah, pop up and said unmuted. That wasn't it before. Either way, I vote yes.
Yes. Brochus?
Yes.
Eisler?
Eisler?
Yes.
Carl Ovid?
Yes. Yes.
God help me.
I heard somebody just say, "I don't know."
Alright.
God, am I headphones frozen?
Not very good.
So this is the taxing totally.
I make a motion that we adjut, uh, nine hundred seventy-nine dollars and ten cents. The package on ration for, uh, uh, I think the bulk of them on this one was where they were not. It was covered deceased. So I make that motion. Second.
Reed?
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 Muted.
Alright. I don't know. I apologize for the technical difficulty. Um... Let's see. Jolynn, can you unmute yourself?
Yep, I am unmuted.
Alright.
Jody, are you able to mute everyone and just unmute the council for now?
That's what I'm trying to do, but it's, um, complicated. Let me try this.
Can you hear?
Okay. Now I can hear you. I just unmuted people.
Okay, yeah. It's the same. It's going back and forth. Either way, I vote yes.
Sorry about that. Uh... Now I just have to find everybody in the list of attendees.
I can, I can mute my own.
So now, council members, can you mute and unmute yourselves? Steve, can you mute? And can you unmute? Okay.
Yes.
Alright. Kurt, are you able? Will you unmute?
Yes, I can control it. Yes.
Alright, Jolynn, can you hear me?
Alright. Yep.
Alright, I think I have now all council members. I don't know, Chris. I didn't change anything. I'm gonna, I have a controller. I can unmute your mic. Let me see if that works. So now I've unmuted. Yes.
Okay.
So if you mute yourself.
Yeah, it's on my end.
Alright, I haven't touched anything else on yours, so you have both, you have both phone and video unmuted.
Okay.
Are you on, are you using your computer phone, uh?
I'm on my computer, but I'm dialed in.
Okay, just make sure.
Presentation on my computer and I'm off my phone.
Alright. Alright, let's try to proceed. I'm sorry. Okay, we're, the package on a, Reed?
Yep.
Brochus?
Jolynn, when you unmute, it's your night.
Yes.
Eisler?
Yes.
Carl Ovid? Oh, Carl Ovid? Yes. Or White? Sorry. Or White? Sorry. Reed? I just said Reed. Alright.
Alright, now I should be letters.
Yes.
Gotcha. Alright, next is the proof of invoice.
Okay, I make a, make a motion that will prove to pay the invoices of one hundred thirty-three thousand, three hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents. Second.
Brochus?
Yes.
Eisler?
Yes.
Carl Ovid? I can't hear Carl Ovid's vote.
I can't hear Carl Ovid's vote.
Hmm, he's left. Kurt has left the room.
Chris, I'm not doing anything to you. Kurt, are you back? Are you back? I know, I'm trying to fix it. Oh my gosh, this is a disaster.
Unmuted.
What's that?
Alright, so every single person is now unmuted. And I'm supposed to be able to put you on mute and you be able to unmute yourself. So I'm gonna try that right now.
Muted.
Alright, so Chris, can you unmute yourself? I was able to do it. Okay, great. Um... I'm at a loss for what to do to fix this now.
Alright, so does Chris have access to the comment working on this, since he's using his computer as well?
Yes.
I would say just have him write his name and his answer right next to it, kinda like what I did.
Is that what? Are we doing the vote now? Let me just, let's just do a roll call to see if everybody can unmute themselves. Alright, Kurt?
Yes, I'm here.
Chris?
No, no, that's okay.
Chris, type in the chat. He says he's muted. What? He's on chat. Chris, I have my wrist. He's on chat and, uh... And he says he's muted.
Hi, I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Yep.
There's just some weird combination of some can unmute themselves and some can't.
I don't know why. Every now and then it'll do a story, unmuted on my phone, and then it'll let me talk.
Alright.
Now I'm good.
Okay. I'm looking for, um, Joel. He's on, he said he can't unmute himself. And Linda also. I need to know what. Yeah, now I can hear you, Joel.
Alright, it just worked for the first time.
Okay. And Linda, I need to know my number. She's calling on. She's on, she's at four two eight seven eight. Well, I don't see that number in my list of attendees. It's two eight seven eight. Alright. Are you reading the copy? Well, I'm trying to look at the attendee list and look at the chat at the same time. So she said she could set up a conference call through Cetacog if I send her the numbers. Which numbers does she need? Just conference call from there. Just call me on my phone, Linda. Alright, should we just pause the meeting? Take a recess and come back in fifteen?
Well...
Sounds good to me.
I know, so I...
Jody?
Yeah?
Until Linda Sterling calls you, then you can just relay it from there. Let's continue on. Mr. Mayor, can you hear that? Because at this rate, we'll be here, we will be lost.
We have a lot that needs to get done.
Yeah, Linda. Yeah. No, I don't think that, I don't think that's gonna work. I'm just trying to, um, I don't even see... Sorry.
Chris, are you there? Yep, I'm there. Alright, Jolynn, let's do that, um, vote again for the invoices. Everyone's here.
Alright, alright. I have, I have my brochus, that second, and then I'm going to go roll call those. Brochus?
Yes.
Eisler?
Yes.
Carl Ovid?
Yes, yes.
Right, Reitner?
Yes.
Reed?
Yeah, yeah. Alright. One to go. Ten minutes for this.
Why they're, why I'm going to do the replacement of the paper.
Yes.
Yes.
Kurt, Kurt, read it off and we'll vote.
Alright. So Officer, Officer Murley has finished his one probationary period and received a letter of, um, recommendation by the state of Tano. Full-time basis. Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Reed?
Yeah.
Brochus?
Yes.
Eisler?
Yes.
Carl Ovid?
Yes, yes.
Right?
Yes.
Keep going, Kurt.
Alright, council member, relaying development. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
So, we were getting an extension on Smirly property, the property, uh, on Rose, uh, and, uh...
The property, um, on Rose, uh, and, uh, he's acting, uh, he has worked for a long time as well. Well, physically, we intend to extend it, uh, but he said the date is, uh, process, he could extend it like that. Making a motion to, uh, recommend it, uh, like, uh, John.
Chris, what was that property again, Chris?
That's the property where the company knew the, uh, yeah, sorry.
Chris, it's Mike. I'm down here also. Uh, the question of property is the quarter of, uh, uh, on North Sixth Street, uh, between Reno and Mossar, uh, where we've been dealing with the story sheds, uh, develop, land development since two thousand seventeen. So, um, yeah, uh, what happened was developer hired a new engineer. And what happened, uh, from the previous plan to this plan was, uh, they need some new, uh, evaluations on storm drainage. And, uh, due to the COVID nineteen, the engineer's not able to work. Um, so he, uh, requested to the city for an extension of time, which is required through the municipal planning code. They asked for a ninety day, they asked for a ninety day extension. Chris, do you have any problem with that?
Nope, that's what I meant.
Okay, second.
Brecher?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Carlovin?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yeah, yeah.
With that said, Chris, Jody, uh, Jolynn, if we could, um, you received a, uh, letter of extension that, that all we had to do is fill in the dates and times, or dates, excuse me.
Yeah.
Is there anything we can get down on city letterhead, get it signed by you and the mayor? So we get forwarded to the Smirlys? Uh, so we have that online, uh, just to follow the, uh, regulations of the municipal planning code, please? Please?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
All right, so we have the second reading to Bill twenty twenty oh one, the public notice bill. This is the one where we're required into having it in at least a minimum twenty-four hours. Council meeting, council meeting, we make a motion, a motion, second reading of this.
Hey, hang on, hang on.
Yeah, I can hear you, Chris, go ahead.
Steve, when someone's talking down there, you guys have, you guys have, you can't hear a word, say, because the problems are your people's, and then there's a bad echo, bad echo.
There we go.
Can't hear anything, that's what's coming through your TV. So, yeah, everything Kurt said there, I, I didn't hear a word either.
Right, so everybody has to mute themselves in between the times that they're talking, and then we won't have that feedback.
Yep, and now it's a lot better. I've had to tell it to mute it already. I'm not coming through that TV, thank you, Steve. Kurt, if you could repeat, I mean, I know it's there, but just if anybody's only dialed in, if you could repeat that.
Okay, so, uh, over a month ago, we had a first reading of the public notice bill on the ordinance. So what this is, it's a requirement that the agenda be, uh, completed at minimumly twenty-four hours before the official council meeting. So we make a motion to have the second reading of this public notice ordinance, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ister?
Steve, you have to unmute yourself.
Unmute.
Yes.
Carlovin?
Yes, yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Yeah.
And Brochus?
Yes.
All right, before we go, just the, are you gonna do C D C O stuff or not? Because the one thing we really need to do with C D C O is definitely do the engineer estimate, um, amendment, so that we can move forward with them getting their paycheck.
Yeah, as soon as I can get, uh, Linda back on the, back on the line.
Okay.
I have not seen her number pop up yet in the attendee list. But I'm looking. All right?
Yep.
Okay. We're into first readings now, several, um, ordinances. The first reading is Bill number twenty twenty dash oh two, retail food facilities. This is a repeal and replace ordinance, um, for number five five three, food handling establishments, which was adopted in, uh, May of nineteen fifty-four. It updates the definitions to match those in the Department of Agriculture's, uh, regulations. It clarifies the jurisdiction for permanent food facility licensure, inspection and processes. And then it also adds an article two for mobile food facilities. This also establishes the jurisdiction for licensure and inspection. There's a permit requirement for those that are licensed in jurisdictions outside the city of Sunbury. And there are provisions for the operation of mobile food facilities within the city limits. There is an exclusion for temporary food facilities, which are those food facilities that are set up for a one-time in association with a specific event. Do I have a motion to approve it as a first reading, or is council discussion?
Yeah, make that into a motion for a first reading.
I'll second that.
Carlovin?
Yes, yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yeah, yeah.
Brochus?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
All right, next we have a first reading for Bill number twenty twenty dash oh three, noise. This is also a repeal and replace for ordinance number eight sixty-five, noise, adopted in December of nineteen seventy-one. This establishes the provisions necessary to satisfy the liquor control board. Um, it, it updates the definitions, includes prohibited acts, a provision for special permits for relief of noise restrictions, um, how do we measure the, and assess sound, and also includes the violations and penalties and complaint procedures. This is the first step into being able to achieve relief from the L C B enforcement to have the city enforce the, uh, noise ordinance.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, have.
Make that into a form of motion.
Reese said I need a second.
Second.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yeah.
Brecher?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Carlovin?
Yes, yes.
All right, next on the agenda is the first reading of Bill number twenty twenty dash oh four, residential rental property. This is a repeal and a replace of chapter one thirty-four, rental property was adopted in two thousand twelve and amended in two thousand seventeen. This has updated the definitions, clarified the housing permit process and requirements, and also clarifying the inspection procedures. Um, and that's it.
Make this into a form of motion to accept the first reading.
Second.
Reese?
Yeah.
Brecher?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Carlovin?
Yes, yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Okay, uh, first reading, Bill number twenty twenty dash oh five, sewers. This is repeal and replace of ordinance number twelve thirty, municipal authority regulations. Adopted in two thousand three, ordinance number eight eighty-eight, drains under sidewalks, adopted in seventy-three. Ordinance number nine twenty-nine, holding tanks, adopted in nineteen seventy-six. And ordinance number nine twenty-eight, separation of storm and sanitary sewer systems, adopted in seventy-six. This updates the provisions to make match current standards and incorporate chapter one eleven, which was municipal authority regulations. It was in a separate, separate chapter, and combines it all into one ordinance relative to sewers.
Make this into a form of motion.
Second.
Brecher?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Carlovin?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
All right, first reading for Bill number twenty twenty dash oh six, commercial property. This is new legislation. It establishes compliance inspection program for commercial properties, includes the commercial only, uh, properties, three or more residential units that comprise a commercial property and mixed-use properties. It establishes requirements in the process for certificate of occupancy that must be renewed every three years and includes an inspection in order to issue and renew the certificate of occupancy. It also establishes a vacant property registration. After six consecutive months unoccupied, there is a registration process and there is a, there are waivers.
Make this into a form of motion. Do I have a second?
I'm sorry, who's the one?
I'll second.
Ister?
Yes.
Yes.
Carlovin?
Yes, yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, this is, uh, first reading for Bill number twenty twenty dash seven, blighted property review committee. This is a repeal and replace ordinance number one thousand one, which was vacant property review committee. It creates the blighted property review committee and, um, in accordance with Pennsylvania statute, the committee would consist of a council member, a representative of the redevelopment authority, representative of the planning commission, and a representative from the executive branch designated by the mayor. Each member serves a staggered four-year term. It establishes their power and duties to determine properties blighted, certify the blighted properties to the redevelopment authority after a due notice to the owner and opportunity to remediate. And it also has provisions for the acquisition and disposition of blighted property in eminent domain by, um, and establishes processes for redevelopment contract versus a disposition by deed.
All right, so make this into a form of motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Carlovin?
Yes, yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, this is, uh, first.
Jody, can you hear me?
Yep.
I was just gonna say, before I move on, I don't know if, uh, Mr. Rob is still here, but I was trying to talk earlier about his comment in the beginning, just so he was clear that that's, that was where the, the people that were gonna be on that committee were listed in that block. Uh, so it wasn't like anyone was appointed except for, um, within those four rounds. Just making sure that that was, he saw that, so that's all I wanted to say, I was trying to say it earlier, but it's gonna get through, so that's all I wanted to bring up.
Okay, thank you. All right, first reading for Bill number twenty twenty dash oh eight, non-uniform pension plan documents. This is an amendment to ordinance number twelve seventy-six of retirement system. And it is to approve the Pennsylvania municipal retirement system document conversion to a new document required by the I R S. There are no change to pension benefit calculations or parameters. It's simply a, um, rolled over into new type of documents.
Second.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yeah.
Brecher?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Carlovin?
Yes, yes.
As a follow-up to, um, that, um, proposed ordinance, uh, Councilman Reese asked me to put on the agenda a non-uniform retirement system evaluation um, to conduct a, a critical review of current planned benefits. Um, and then consider potential changes to benefits formulas for future employees. Consider whether or not a four oh one K retirement contribution system would work better for us instead of a municipal pension system. And, um, again, considering exploring options for future employees.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yep. Allow, uh, Jody to do this research and obviously, it's not going to affect any of the current employees.
So I second that.
So Reese, are you making a motion?
So where are we at here? There was a motion.
Who made the motion?
Chris.
I did.
And second?
Yes, yes.
All right, Reese?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Brecher?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Carlovin?
Yes.
Okay, so, in the unfinished business, we still have the police department, uh, building. We did receive three completed feasibility studies for three thirty-seven Arch Street, four forty-one Chestnut Street, and seven hundred North Fourth Street. Um, with the reception of all of those and none other, uh, properties being made, um, um, brought to our attention, then I suggest that the next steps be to schedule a work session for council to compare and discuss the, uh, the properties as soon as Monday, April twentieth. And then hopefully be prepared to vote for a final decision on April twenty-seventh at the next council meeting, and then pursue funding. What is your desire?
I'll make a motion.
Kim, you had something you wanted to say, huh?
Chris, I missed that. What did Chris say? I'll second that.
Carlovin?
Yes, yes.
Rechner?
What was the motion?
The closed submission, continue as the timeline is stated.
Yes.
Brecher?
No.
Reese?
Yeah, yeah.
Ister?
Yes.
All right, these are just items for council discussion. Um, the mayor had asked, and I relate to the treasurer, Kevin Truup, that we wanted some sort of idea of the anticipated impact of, uh, COVID nineteen response and economic changes on the city budget for this year and next. So, Mr. Truup?
Probably gonna see a most significant, uh, drop in taxes, who aren't working, paying. So that can be cut down significantly. Tax wise, uh, taxes are coming in on a steady basis, but, you know, if this continues to go on, people aren't gonna pay that, and it could have another impact on taxes too, so. Like I said, we've been in it now, what, three weeks, four weeks? And the only thing I can say is, just to watch our spending and keep track of it, to see how the income and expenses are coming together, you know, and take it, you know, by week by week, or, or meeting by meeting, to see how they're going.
What if, what if the revenue with the swimming pool being closed this year now, since everything is delayed?
Swimming pools are a great key to think, Kurt. I mean, your revenue coming in, your expenses there, it's, it's probably most likely we lose out on this one. What we make our money is a skating rink. The pool is like, um, you know, yeah, it's just, it's something that's nice to have, it's luxury to have for the kids and the families to go to, but it doesn't, it doesn't make us money.
But we're clear though, we haven't.
We won't be spending money for, for supply, and we won't be spending money for chemicals, you know, and we won't, you know, be spending money for, uh, employees. On the other hand, there's no revenue coming in, so it's gonna break, it's gonna break the, it's probably bene, it's probably gonna be beneficial overall, as they close.
But there hasn't been anything made on whether or not the pool is open.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you, Jody, I just wanted to bring that up. We're working right now, Julie and I'll be meeting today and tomorrow regarding the, uh, the bids that we got coming in. Kurt, right now, we intend to have that pool open, it may not be for the full season, but the pool's gonna be open somewhere, providing the government allows us to do it, Kurt.
Okay.
Okay, sir?
Okay, thank you.
I just don't want the kids to think they're gonna be cooped up all year long without swimming, because a lot of them rely on that, low to moderate income children, so we wanna make sure we don't get that rumor out there that we're shutting down for the season.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I just have one more question for, uh, uh, Mr. Truup. Are there any, um, municipal treasury organizations that are, are putting out any guidance, any, that you should be, that should be considered as we're moving? Anything coming out from any new organization?
I haven't heard anything from anybody yet, but like you say, we are tracking all of our expenses for this pandemic. And we're hoping to put in for it all, because we are working, people are on the front lines, the best thing I can do.
Okay.
Just keep track of all of our expenses and costs, even payroll, we're gonna keep track of sixteen.
Jody, one more thing, Jody. I, I know, I think last week we discussed the fact, all these activities we normally have through the summer. Somewhere along the line, you always sit down and figure out which ones won't be happening because of the shutdown. We really don't know when the government's gonna open things back up. I know our baseball leagues is gonna be affected. Until they open back up, the season's almost over. And of course, we have some re-celebration, the River Festival, Chris, I'm not sure your date, that's in August though, isn't it?
Yeah, August, yeah, August, February, September, November, November.
Okay, so. So, that's something we have to discuss somewhere along the line here. So, I know, so, that's where we're at. I'm down there for that, so.
Okay, okay. Just an update on this, you know, management program. You'll get the, uh, grant award contract signed, and the next steps will be to establish the contract with the consultants for the initial assessment and five-year outlook. Um, Management Partnerships is the name of the firm that had been selected from the proposals received. And I think that, um, this is really important, especially now, considering the uncertainty of the economic future, that we have these consultants helping us to sort through that and, um, make adjustments or make plans in order to address that. Um, no action required on this, that's just informational. Any discussion? Okay. This is just an update on the codification, um, just flip through these slides real quick. Uh, we had, uh, several, we heard the, um, revised ordinances came up for first reading. And, um, and we're just continuing to press on, uh, even though it's very difficult, obviously, considering that we can't meet in person too much. And then, uh, as far as, um, city administrators report, just making sure everybody is still aware that the office hours at the front office are ten AM to two PM, that Jolynn and Kara are, are working alternate days. There was, uh, the request for proposals for the police pension fund management went out, we received three proposals. Um, I have on hold until further notice, however, I am aware that, um, our solicitor, Joel Leest, is reviewing those proposals. There will be some changes, of course, like, um, Councilman Ister mentioned about the, um, events planned for the summer. Looking ahead, it's uncertain about swimming lessons, student's employment, and things like that. Um, of course, I'm working from home and, um, trying to receive and disseminate the COVID nineteen information resources as there, that situation is evolving and updating the website and Facebook posts. Still working hard on the, on the codification. Still working hard on the, on the codification. Uh, I think on the community economic development side of things, it's not too early to start thinking about what this recovery may look like and anticipate that, and how to position ourselves and our community for the best outcomes and the quickest recovery. For the Department of Accounts and Finance, the employees are working alternate days, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The auditor was selected, Maraduzel, the initial document collection. I understand they've already requested documents. And then, looking ahead, we need to continue to evaluate budget and revenue projections, again, in these kind of uncertain times. Department of Public Safety, the office clerks are working alternate days. We are not issuing any building permits except for emergency repair work. And the housing permit deadline to pay without penalty was extended to April 30th. And I'm just thinking ahead, if the council might want to consider any other things to help give relief to people in our community with, as far as, you know, relief from penalties, delay of deadlines, anything like that. So if any of the council members have suggestions for that, that they want to bring to me, and then they can maybe be talked about at the next council meeting. The code officers are still out there doing their patrols. And we have one working from home on very specified assigned projects. We have the parcel numbers and the ownership updated in the iWork software, and some of that required a lot of hand jamming the data input. I checked in with Chad Gabison from the Americas Ambulance, and he said they had no unmet needs at this time, although I just saw recently a request come out for, a request for PPE. And then, looking ahead, how are we going to deal with the backlog of workload? That's going to be, we've halted the rental unit inspections, and so we got to come up with a plan to how we're going to catch up on that workload after this is eased a bit. Parks and public property, my understanding is that there are two teams working alternate days, doing the essential tasks for facilities, parks, playgrounds, et cetera. And as Councilman Heister mentioned, we did receive two bids for the project. And I took initial look at them, and we're going to have to dig deeper into the details of each, each bid to evaluate each of them. And we should be able to do that this week. And again, as Councilman Heister put it, it's just very uncertain for the pools, playgrounds, programs, events, et cetera. Department of Streets and Public Improvements, they're using a rule of thumb for the fewest number of employees to complete critical tasks in the least amount of time. They're doing the trash pickup, mowing, any emergency situations that need to be dealt with, and have suspended, again, the brush pickup, brush pile drop off, mulch giveaways, and the street sweeping. And of course, the streets projects have been halted, and all of that will have to be reevaluated in the future as things open back up. Any questions or discussion on the administrator's report?
And just to put it out there, parking meters...
Parking meter violations will not be ticketed. That's only for parking meters and municipal parking lots. That doesn't mean that it's free parking. We still, I think, want people to pay the meter. Is that right, Chief Hare?
Yeah, I mean, we're enforcing most of the heating stuff, because most of the people are part of the market street, they're in the lots. Some people are staying home, so it made more sense to try to give them some relief during this time period, for the government, besides, to start opening up a little bit more. Once that comes into play, we'll have to, we'll look at that also with the street sweeping, and, and the, you know, state will decide when that's going to happen.
Okay, anything else on the administrator's report? Any questions or comments?
Yeah, Jody? The grant writer, can you give an update, what stands, what grant C is applied for? What's on the list? Curiosity.
Absol-, absolutely. And get a list of what it is he's working on. I know he's working on the WPA, like, mortgage litigation grant, and I have an intonation with him, also touching on bike pedestrian audit, and he would grant, totally, totally, get that done. So those are the only two things that I know are sticking there going forward. I'm going to be speaking with him on a grant. I don't know, Chief Hare, if you can get on that, if you can.
Now, Jody, I'll give you a call, it's something scheduled to be downed, the proposals. The bids?
Okay.
Thank you.
I do have one comment on a grant that the police department is currently applying for with him, if you guys want an update. So, right now, through PCCD, we just applied for a grant. It's a fully funded grant. It's to get all brand-new car cameras and body cams for the officers here. And part of the reason we're going through that is, it's part of our ongoing more transparency for the police department. It's going to help with any type of complaints, stuff like that. Again, the grant is, it's about $48,000. It is fully funded, there is no matching or anything like that. We did receive letters of support, obviously, from the mayor, Representative Linda Culver, of Thomin County Behavioral Health. So we're just, today's, we have to file today, it was extended from like March 31st. So we're basically applying for that today. We're doing the final review, and the grant writer, and Officer Ketchum, and Jody's been on kind of like the board with doing that. There's no action needed by council. Joel actually reviewed some of the paperwork that he had to sign, the mayor had to sign, Joel had to sign, and the controller, Dan Saxon, had to sign. So everything's been reviewed, we're just kind of, we'll be submitting that today. Again, that's, it's a fully funded program if we get it. Again, things probably are going to change a little bit with everything going on. But if it's through PCCD, and again, it's 100% fully funded, once we get that, if we're likely to be awarded the grant, it shouldn't be long to get rolling out once we get the equipment and onboard, so. I just want to kind of give everybody an update on that.
All right, so is Linda, Linda Sterling available so that we can move along with this?
Linda? All right, I can go over what this is. This is a, the most important business that she needed us to take care of today was the resolution for the amendment to the engineering estimate. And this has to do with, the city has a three-year contract with CES Engineering. So far, on the Reagan Street project, they've invoiced $170,000. The Reagan Street project is requiring additional engineering services outside the original scope of work for the contract, including some additional requirements from PennDOT, PennDOT, and some additional requirements from Norfolk Southern. So we received, we received a letter from CES requesting an additional $60,000, and this $60,000 would come out of the grant, it was an approved use of grant fund. Need a vote from council to approve this, Republican President.
Thanks, Jody. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, Chris, we can hear you.
Oh, sorry, so Linda was saying that she's there. The next thing is audience comment, right? You want to vote, just in case you wanted to add anything? You want to just do the audience comment, have everybody in the question? So that way, you can know who it is that's under during the question period?
We need to get done with this voting first before we move to the audience comments.
Well, that's why I'm saying, unless anyone wants to say anything else on it. Well, you can type in unless you have anything to add. Make sure that someone wanted to add before we go.
So Linda has... She can hear, but I have her unmuted on the...
Jody, Jody, we have audience comment prior to the vote there, Kurt. Chase, is there any question before the vote, Kurt?
Yeah.
Jody, is there any audience comment, like Chris said?
Unmuted.
All right, unmuted.
Muted. Unmuted. Q and A session has started.
So I put it in a Q and A session to see if Linda can put in a question in the Q and A? All right, Linda, are you able to... I think the queue just dropped you. Linda? All right, Linda, can you get in the queue again? Linda, was there anything you needed to add? You can add it in the chat. So Linda says that she's okay to proceed with approving the letter, because she's reviewed the request carefully and the requests are reasonable. Is the council ready to vote? Is there a motion to approve the resolution? I mean...
Q and A session is over.
Chris, did you make that a motion?
Want to make a motion?
Chris, did you make that a motion?
I either did or seconded yours, either one.
Okay, doesn't matter. Go ahead, Jolynn.
Carlovan?
Yes, yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes, yeah.
Brochus?
Yes.
Heister?
Yes.
All right, what's left, Jody?
Want to ask Linda if you can type in the chat about this professional service agreement?
Muted.
Linda, on the professional service agreement, do you have, I have the slide up about the agreement between CEDOCOG to administer the federal fiscal year 2019 CDVG grant, that the total professional services would cost $50,000. And you can see the breakdown of the cost there. For application preparation, activity selection is $14,910. Grant administration is $11,560. Activity development is $14,570. And activity management is $8,960. For a total of $50,000 for CEDOCOG to manage, administer the FFY 2019 CDVG. And this all comes from the grant money itself. This isn't additional.
I'm going to do something that we can, I'll make a motion.
Okay, we need to vote. Had a first and last motion.
Jolynn?
I can't, I can't...
The mayor made the motion, I seconded Jolynn. Ready for the vote. Thank you.
Reichter?
Reichter, yes.
Reese? Reese?
Reese is probably muted again, hang on.
Chris just wrote that he voted yes.
Okay. Brochus?
Yes.
Heister?
Yes.
Carlovan?
Yes, yes.
All right, I think that was all the residual voting from the beginning of the meeting that was skipped. Yeah, so now we're down to announcements. Mayor?
Hey, Jody, if you want to go through it, it seems you're that way.
All right, so, private use of public facilities, the April events have already been canceled. We'll see if the stay-at-home order is extended into May, in which case then we'll have to address the May events that were scheduled. As far as road closures for April and May events, PennDOT will not be approving any road closures for April and May. So if the event in May required a road closure, the event planner should have to reconsider whether or not they need to move their event, or put it in, make it in such a way that there will not need to be a road closure in order to still have it if we're allowed to have gatherings. We had scheduled public meetings for street projects for Forest Street and Reagan Street, but those will have to be rescheduled whenever we have an idea of when those projects will continue. And then, as far as the committee meetings for New Year's Eve and Heart and Heritage Festivals, those will have to be determined, to be determined. The next council meeting, we're going to do April 27th at 6:15 p.m. Again, we're going to try the online platform, work out all the bugs from this one. Maybe we'll try a different one if need be. But I'll be working hard on trying to make this go much smoother. Even though we had a dry run, it seemed okay last week. It's a bit more to manage with so many people on the line. So I promise, I apologize.
Can we reconsider the time, the meeting on Friday, is that we can make it earlier in the day again? again?
Well, the problem is. I did advertise that. I hear you, so. And so, I think that it's best to go back to the original council meeting times, that's what the public is used to. We'd have to re-advertise again because we were leaning forward in advertising the 27th from 9:30 a.m., but because the mayor has to work during the day and can't use his work time to do city business, we have to do it after 4:30. So if we have to go to 4:30, we might as well go to the original times that council has been held for years, and because again, it's what the public is used to as well. But I'm open to discussion.
I think. So you'll be back to work on the 27th? So you'll be back to work on the 27th then, Kurt? I prefer not to, regarding my private.
So for now, we'll keep it, we'll go to the 6:15, and if there is a start of discussion offline, and there needs to be a change, just let me know as soon as possible. All right. We're going to try the Q and A mode again for, for audience comments. So for those on the telephone, they have to press star six, and for those on the computer, they press the ask a question button. I didn't ask a question to see if you could hear me.
I can hear you now.
Ah, okay. Any, any questions for me? Okay, thanks a lot. Take care, everybody.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, so.
Wait, I have one thing to tell you. I heard there was a concern from emergency services for protective gear. We're hearing that in all communities, and we are, we are working with DCD to see if we can request a CDPG emergency grant to provide some of that. At this time, I have no idea if that will happen, but we're giving it a shot.
Okay. All right, thank you, Linda. All right. All right, going into the Q and A session again, see if people can queue up and we can answer their questions as they, in the order they receive.
Q and A session has started.
Did, I missed the first part of this whole meeting, but did you do anything with the noise ordinance this meeting?
Yes, we did have a first reading of the noise ordinance, and so that ordinance will be available on our website shortly after this meeting, by the end of the day today. I'll put a link to it on the front part of our website, so that people can see all the ordinances that had their first readings today.
Okay, and then you have the second meeting in Thursday's, and then it's passed.
Right, and then there's still a process to go through for approval with the LCB, so that we transition from them enforcing noise ordinance to the city itself enforcing the noise ordinance, and then LCB will be out of the picture.
Okay. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Thanks, Lori.
Right, the first, the first step is getting the ordinance passed.
Right.
Okay?
Okay, thanks so much, Jody.
You're welcome. Does anybody else have a question or comment? You have to ask a question, you have to press the question button, or star six on your phone. Okay, I don't see any more requests, so we're going to.
Q and A session is over.
All right, so thank you, everyone, that participated today. The next meeting is the 27th at 6:15 p.m. We're going to try to work out all the bugs and practice a little bit more between now and then. So the meeting is now adjourned.